Called this meeting of the Rocky Mountain City Council Committee of the Whole to order. And I had 5:00, 5:40, 4:40, 4:58 on my phone and 5:02 on my iPad. I didn't know what time it was. I guess I split the difference. It's five o'clock, we can get to work. Welcome to everybody today. Welcome Mayor Lek Robertson.
Thank you.
Good to see you here. And a number of staff and guests that are here. I'd like to remind everybody that this is a working session of the city council. And our normal process and protocol is to work as a team here together with the agenda that's been set up. So at this time, let me recognize the city mayor.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Before we move to the agenda, I do want to take this opportunity to introduce to everyone our interim communications and marketing officer, Dorothy Smith. I think Dorothy is known to many people in Rocky Mountain. She has been an employee of the city and a former life, you might say. And we're very fortunate to have her be with us during this interim period. Her primary responsibilities, of course, would be in managing the city's communications, marketing, as well as public relations. Added that very important, important element to that as well. So you will be receiving, if you have already received emails and correspondence from Dorothy Smith, so now you can put a face with your name. With that, the mayor for town has requested a hard stop at 6:15. And so I've asked the staff to please be aware of that, to keep their presentations as brief as possible, so that we can move through the agenda rather quickly and be on time with requests. So with that, we'll begin with the auditor presentation. This is an annual event for us here in the city. Physical condition of the city will be presented to you. This is our auditor who will go into much more detail about the financial condition of the city. Very happy to report that we are in good standing. And I don't want to steal any thunder from her or from Amy. This is our 25th year of receiving the distinguished audit financial presentation from GFOA. So that's a lot to be proud of, and you will be seeing more about that as time goes on. So with that, I will ask Amy if she wants to add any elders comments before introducing our auditor.
Sure. You did steal my thunder. Sorry. I was going to let you know, we finished our 25th consecutive year of getting the certificate of achievement. I mean, that's not something to take lightly. Our audit report, which is about 190 some pages, exciting read, if you ever want to look through the financial information. But to get that certificate, the content has to conform to some strict standards. But we also have to strictly comply with governmental accounting practices, as well as governmental, as well as GAAP. So it's not an easy thing. And I was asked to be briefed, so that's all I'll tell you about that. And I'll turn it over to Carrie Dunlap, who is with Martin Storms. The city has been with Martin Storms for 12 years, I believe. We've had different members of their staff, you know, auditing us, and that's a good thing, because it keeps a fresh pair of eyes, give a new perspective every now and then. But it's nice to have the same firm who we've worked with, we know what they want, and vice versa, so that we can have a really smooth audit in working with them. But I'll turn it over to Carrie, so she can tell you about the results.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Carrie Dunlap. I'm with Martin Storms and Associates, and that's actually based out of Freelemont, Carolina. And we are a firm that we specialize in governmental accounting. We audit over 100 entities. We have counties, towns, municipalities, nonprofits. We really pride ourselves in our knowledge on GASB and all the government standards, so we can make sure that we're implementing everything correctly. And so I just wanted to give you a brief kind of background on my firm. And I wanted to thank you for allowing us to continue being the city's auditors. We really appreciate having you as a client. So I'm going to give you a couple of brief highlights. Feel free to ask me questions as we go along, if you would like. Some brief audit highlights, there was an unmodified opinion on the financial statements and compliance, which that's the goal, it's a clean opinion. There were no findings, no issues that we thought that the numbers may be immaterial or misstated in any way. So we very much appreciate the cooperative staff. We have lots of requests throughout the year. We're actually onsite twice a year, but all year long, we're constantly communicating with Nikki and Amy. And so we make sure, all of our planning and risk assessments, we send out audit inquiries to you guys, so that if there's anything that you want to make us aware of, we want to make sure that you have that open communication with us as well. So if there's anything you have any questions about, or need, or concerns, feel free to reach out to us. We really appreciate getting everything done timely. Another thing to add is, this is our third year, at least, that I'm aware of. This is my third year on the audit. And we, the LGC's deadline is 10/30, and we always have met that with ample time. So that's, lots of entities push that 10/31 deadline as closely as they can, and we really appreciate Nikki and Amy getting it to us before the deadline. So a brief presentation of the general fund. Revenues were 67.8 million. That was a 5.6 million increase over last year, so 9%. And revenues were also about a 5.7, 5.6 million increase, or 9% over last year as well. So indicators of that were taxes to increase this year. As far as the expenses and the revenues, the event center was a driver behind both of those as well. And there, for the fire department, there were three new fire trucks, so that contributed to the increase in expenses. Those are the main drivers behind those numbers. This is a slide that just shows you your unassigned fund balance as a percent of expenditures, without taking PAV bill and street rate consideration. And so this kind of shows a 2% decrease over last year, but this is kind of an indicator that shows this is, if revenues were to stop, this is your unassigned fund balance, that's how long we continue paying your expenses. The next slide shows an overview of your ad and warrant taxes for this year. And as I mentioned, there was a tax increase this year. It went up 2 million, or about 8%. And there was also about a 3% growth in assessed value that contributed to this increase as well. The next slide is your second largest revenue, which is your local option sales tax, and that increased 7%, or about 821,000 this year. And that increase has been up across the state, so that's what we want to see. The next, the third highest revenue for you guys is your intergovernmental revenues. And this has backed out the local option sales tax and PAV bill. And so your increase after that is about 1%, so it's pretty consistent from last year. But this tax includes, you know, your franchise, your license of permit, your B R Y and vehicle, those kinds of taxes are included in this 8.7 million. And the last revenue presentation I'll show you is your sales and services for the general fund. And this increased 1.2 million this year, about 14%, and that was due to the event center. So the event center, or revenues are included in the sales and services. Line item, if you're looking at financial statement, the general fund's broken down by these revenues, and so that's where you'll find out your revenues.
So a question. So if you thought that there was an unhealthy trend, or unhealthy level in any of these funds, you'd be reporting, reporting that to us?
Yes. That would be evident, and that, you know, if revenues were not exceeding expenditures or some sort, you know, if there was a large decrease that wasn't explained, you know, those kinds of things would be presented in the audit presentation. So that's kind of a brief overview of the general fund. The next couple of slides are going to show your enterprise funds. So your electric fund, the comparison over last year, you can see the revenue decreased, expenses increased. A lot of this was due to your salaries and benefits, the normal increases, as well as hurricane relief. And then the net revenue, you can see that was a decrease of 1.4. And then the available fund balance actually increased, but that was due to a large carryover in your fund balance appropriation from last year, as well as a smaller carryover this year. So that kind of contributed to that increase in available fund balance. For the gas fund, there are a lot of decreases here, but they were all designated, the available fund balance decrease of 1.4 million, that was designated for working capital for future projects. I think there was a big push to make your available fund balance actually be what's available. And so any projects, you know, you want to make sure those are designated, and you know where those are coming from. So that helped with the available fund balance decrease. For the water fund, the net revenue increased about 500,000 this year, and then the available, that decreased 3.3 million, but that was due to, again, a fund balance appropriation and carryover of 5 million from last year. So those kind of net. And then something that's planned, that's a big expenditure for the water fund and the sewer fund, is the Habo Corat project. So that all kind of factors into this available fund balance number. And then you'll see that again on the sewer fund, that available fund balance decreased 1.8, again, due to the Habo Corat project.
So seeing that, how would that impact next year?
That, I think this is, it should be pretty comparable from '19 to '20, is my understanding, depending on all those projects. And of course, if something else comes up in '20 that you need to plan for as well, then that might impact it. But as far as I know, it should be pretty comparable from '20. And then just another thing to note was, there was a decrease from those expenditures. It looks like they decreased a lot, that 1.7 million, but that was due to a large capital project in prior year. I know that was a lot of numbers, and, oh, sorry, can't forget about the storm half on, although it was very comparable to the prior year. There weren't any big swings one way or the other, but it did overall, available fund balance was able to increase this year. So. And that is all of the enterprise funds. If you have any questions on that, feel free to ask them, we can go back. But this is just a brief slide showing your total debt, where it stands for both the general fund, or governmental and proprietary. So your governmental special obligation bonds, you can see this one right here, that's the event center. That's where the 40 million, and so it's small. You know, each year, you're paying down your debt, and just to kind of have an idea of where the total debt for the city is, this is a good slide to show that representation from year to year. And that is all of the information I have. I know that's a lot of numbers, and I know it there pretty quickly. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask. If you have anything after this meeting, and you want to discuss further, feel free to reach out to me, or Nikki or Amy, we're all available. And the, as you mentioned, that lovely 190-page report, if you want to read any of it, I highly suggest reading the M D and A. That's the first couple of pages, and it's a very good summary of what happened this year and what's happening next year. So it's just a really good place, if you're not a financial person, still something that you would be interested in. So that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Amy, and all the staff as well, for this great result and this new award. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And from that, I gather that we don't have any follow-up for the staff at this time, as a result of the party. This will be put on the city's website, so that the general public can certainly have access to it. The next item is a presentation on the census, the testimony that will be given by the Red Hill Human Relations, Archie Jones. As you know, this is a year for counting the number of people who live within the city limits. It's extremely important that we have an accurate count, because so many of our grants in particular are based on the population. We understand that there have been changes since the 2010 census, so it's important that we get information out into the communities, particularly in those areas that it's very difficult to count individuals. But Archie's going to present to you the city's approach and our involvement in the census 2020 count.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and Mayor, Councily Lake. Human Relations Staff was appointed back in August, September, to represent the county or the city, to work for both counties, National and Excalibur County, in the upcoming 2020 census. Very important date, next year, April 1st, very important. And the key to the success of the census, we believe, would be community involvement. And so, once we get started here...
I haven't, I haven't really loaded the presentation.
Okay.
Give me just one second.
Everyone has to.
Okay. We can hold that. As you know, the census, the purpose of it is to, every 10 years, to count everybody in this country. Count them one time, and make sure that count is accurate as possible. Some important dates to keep in mind, the process started back in 2018, but as we go through it in 2019, they opened approximately 248 census offices across the country. There may be potentially, I saw some reading lately, they may open an office in Greve, which would be the closest one here in the two counties. January 20th, the census began counting the population in Alaska. April 1st is when the official census date, but before April's 1st, there are a lot of things that are going to happen. Beginning in March, they can start a mail-out. Every household in the country will receive a mail-out. They will file up the secretary a week in March, and there will be another mail-out. They are trying to encourage the residents to complete the survey early. Those that can't complete it online, it's a whole lot more efficient and quicker. May 2020, the census will begin visiting homes. So everybody that has not responded by sometime in May 2020, census takers or counters or enumerators will be visiting those residents. So as the saying goes, if you don't want to visit, hopefully you will have completed those forms. July, sometime around July and August, the process will be completed, and the report will be compiled December 2020. The Census Bureau will deliver the report to the United States President and Congress. A few examples of how the census are, the data is used. $675 billion yearly, the system will determine how that might affect the local governments, communities, counties, and cities. Re- digitated will be involved, there also goes with the local precincts or law offices and schools. Also, it will determine housing assistance. That's very important to us, City of Rocky Mountain. We have a lot of residents that over the years have really shown us that that area does a high need for that. And in order to ensure more funding, the census is the tune, we have to respond to designing facilities for disabilities, the elderly, and children, so those are some of the uses of the census. So for the staff that's been involved with me, back in August, we attended the kickoff meeting with Nash County. September 9th, we attended the meeting with Edstone County. And again, the highest population just in both counties resides in Rocky Mountain. So it's very important that the city of Rocky Mountain plays an important part in that. And you will see later on, a graphic will show you some results of the 2010 census, and where we kind of fell, fell short. Also, there was a web, online Summit Webcast staff participated in October 9th, filed the NC Black census. And then the 2020 kickoff, there was a kickoff for recruited part-time employees that was on October 14th. The NC Black census summit, a couple of things they really touched on, as far as undercounted groups, minority families, American males, African-American male renters, alarm in the age between 23 and 33, they estimate that it was undercounted by 20%. Children, Native American and homeless, greater hard count population. Some of the target populations, veterans, children under 85, people living in rural America, migrant workers, senior citizens, persons living, speaking English, low income, renters. Again, so we know, if you have communities that have a high number of renters, that count in 2010 was probably low. So a lot of effort is going toward increasing that. Figures here, it shows for we're in 2000, it's 2,000, the city's population, right above 55,000. 2010 census, we're a little above 57,000. The estimate for 2018 is at 54,000, so it shows that hospitals we lost, have lost a population around 5%. Hopefully, when they do the 2020 census, that figure will change, but the projection from 2018 shows that. Look at Edstone County, 2000, 2000, a little bit more than 55,000. 2010, 56,000, the increase of 1.7%. Their estimated 2018 numbers dropped to 52,000, 8% drop. Nash County, a little bit different, drop also, they show a drop of 1.9%, 1.9%. That's what they estimated for 2018. The metropolitan area for the city, you're looking at the 2,143,000 residents, 2010, up to 153,000, increase of 6.5%, and they estimate a drop of 4.8%. And for the state, population has continued to grow, over 8 million in 2010, 2010, 9.5 million, increase of 1.5 million. And they estimated that the state's population in 2018 was a little bit over 10.3 million, up 8%. Those figures will probably increase. The state hasn't really grown a lot.
Archie, who are these projections?
Those projections come from the US Census. An important component of census is community input. Community input, now it's probably complete count committee. And the purpose of that committee is to get communities involved. And there are different aspects of that, different branches, different scenarios of how we can do that, but that's a very important key, community input. Some of the recruiting, well, City of Rocky Mountain, complete counting, examples, recruiting committee. The government, the city can have a complete count committee. Education, I have two things highlighted, faith-based and community. When we attended the Nash County kickoff, they assigned some individuals that would head up the faith, faith-based community, we would work with them, and make sure all of our, hopefully, we can get as many churches and communities involved in this process. Community-based organization, that's something I think we really have a big impact on. We have a strong neighborhood association in the city, from a lot of community involvement. If we can capitalize on that, we should show a definitely increase in 2020 census response within the city of Rocky Mountain. Some suggestions for marketing and outreach, media, social media, is very important. Work with National, Edstone County representatives, or census information on the website. I think this year, because of technology, the US Census is really putting stuff out there. I can email probably every other day of a new video to YouTube, and just talking about the benefits of the census, how employment deals, and all the things to address any question that citizens may have. Also included, the city workers update will be sent to all city employees. There's some examples of some things we can work on. Channel, Channel 19, hopefully, there will be a reoccurring slide of there as often as possible. And again, social media, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn, all those tools will play a very important part in making the community work. Town hall meetings, neighborhood meetings, and again, they have a video that talks about the important dates. R O M, Response Outreach Area Map. You know, the next couple of slaps, we'll touch on that. That's a very important tune, that actually, that's a map that we would show, where it would show the uncounted or hard to count population in the county and the city of Rocky Mountain. Next. 2020, you can respond on your cell phone, just like everybody has a cell phone. For those who are connected to the internet, social media, the quickest and easiest way to do it is with the cell phone. If you remember, back before, I said, one of the hardest counts, population was renters. A lot of those renters are probably single. Most of them, as I said, mostly all of the young population has something in their hand, iPad, cell phone, whatever, they can respond like that. Response outreach, outreach area is mapped, and that's going to show us, again, for our, we got the link there for, actually, there's a video, if we had time, I would show you the timeline, but we're not allowed. But I think going to the next slide, there we go. Picture of Edstone County, from that response map. I can, both of these are downloaded, Nash County, but for the Edstone County, look at the dog sections, the red, southeast Rocky Mountain, one of the most undercounted percentage-wise in the county. The next one is the orange, eastern, eastern part of Rocky Mountain, which is west part of Edstone County. Those are two very key areas. And that red, they're projecting that the undercount is 20%. The orange area, undercount is 25%. So we can definitely work on that. And if we work on that, it would not only hit the city, but also hit the county. Nash County's map shows that the south Rocky Mountain section in Nash County is undercounted also. Census jobs, they are in the process of recruiting. They already had some 32,000 part-time employees. And those first round of hires, they pretty much verified addresses. In 10 years, communities have changed, subdivisions have grown, new addresses, so all those new addresses and subdivisions and high-risk areas have been verified. So that was the first 32,000 employees. They are projecting to hire another 500,000 employees, mostly part-time, throughout the country. Those positions are administrative managers, census office managers, census field managers, IT managers, recruiting managers, field representatives. The starting pay varies across the country, but in National, Edstone County, for field counters, the average pay is around $13.50 an hour. I looked at other communities, I think Woodson Cell was at $16 an hour, but City of Rocky Mountain is $13 an hour.
Archie, do they get travel allowances as well?
Yes. And the video that I couldn't show you, they, this would be the idea of part-time for young people, if they're into technology, so I could see them go up and with a phone in their hand, with a map that shows where they're at. And as soon as they check out that address, that information is automatically downloaded to the census headquarters. The next day, when someone goes out or signs in the neighborhood, those addresses are updated every night. Thank you, while, they can actually see where every employee is at any time of the day. And they also try to hire part-time people that familiar with the areas where they stay. So, prime example, we may have a high-risk count area in Rocky Mountain, wouldn't like it that we are hiring a number of part-time people hired in Rocky Mountain to verify those addresses, and then once it did not respond.
If we have areas within the city where it's known that there are folks living who are less friendly to authorities, is that factored into the plan?
Less friendly to authorities.
Right. That was the most impactful way I could think of saying.
One thing we're going to let the community know, and sometimes people feel for about giving that information. This is one process that the US government does, is totally private. I don't care how many people live in your residence, it's not... I don't care how many people live in your residence, it's not going to affect, what are you, public houses, if you've got somebody that's on probation illegally, it doesn't make any difference. The US government just want to count the number of citizens in this country.
I know, we know that, but not everybody necessarily believes that.
So again, a part of our community outreach, we're getting that information out there.
Archie, if you, definitely in our ward, if you let us know, there are people in our ward that really, uh, people are more user-friendly to, feel more comfortable with, and if you let us know, we can point those people out. They're, they're taking that census and make a lot of difference.
Big difference, definitely. Representatives, they'll represent Ashcombe County, uh, and also represent for Nash County. I tried to get both of them to come to this meeting and the previous one, but today was National Holiday, or Federal Holiday, and last was Federal Holiday, so I got stuck with it, but, so far I've enjoyed this, I think that we can make a big impact on the city and in both counties, as much as we can get this information out in different communities.
When did they actually start, have they started with the census?
Well, the verification of addresses was completed until eleven. The actual count will be starting by the middle of March. They have April first as the count date, that's the, that's the date they're saying everybody should have received a application, a survey, and everybody should have been, have completed that by April first. But then they have follow-up dates in the middle of May, where they're going to start once they run the numbers and see where those heavily populated areas are that did not respond, they don't have individuals going out and to individual homes.
Is there a schedule of dates that maybe you can write around to put them in the output?
That'll be a part of our, and I give our community fishing officer, we'll make sure that we can post all of that. Hopefully, on our city website, we can have a, 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 a location for that, what that important date, and also, uh, information, not only English, but it's Spanish, there's some short videos that tell us the census and all the things that you have to do. Again, as much as that stuff we can get out there, and as my cohort says, you got to get it to them, what, seven times? There you go, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Archie.
Thank you. Again, we don't believe we have any other follow-up information to provide to the council, but certainly if you have questions, just contact Archie on the second. Okay, so, uh, the next item is actually an item that will appear on tonight's agenda for Motorola radio maintenance contract, and Rusty is here to provide the details of that.
Thank you. Good evening, Rusty Owens with Indian Resources Department, and I'm here to talk to you about a presentation of a proposal we have for Motorola for a maintenance contract going forward our radio system. Just a little bit of history for you, back at the latter part of two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and sixteen, and about the first six months of two thousand and seventeen, we underwent a major radio upgrade, we moved our system from an analog to a digital platform, so we, we got our system, really rose to us, we've got a very, very good radio system, and we want to, we want to keep it that way. Justification for bringing this before you now, we want to provide the best possible radio communication for public safety responders and all of our city radio users, but especially our public safety responders, these guys, when it's a police or a private or whatever, they key up a radio, they expect it to work, they want it to work, it, it can be life critical if that thing works, and we want to provide as good a system as we possibly can so they can do that. We, we want to be able to ensure that when police and fire have other agencies can come into our city, or they go to another city, or they're on the road or whatever, they can switch over to the state Viper system. That means they can talk to any fire department, any sheriff department, police department, state highway patrol, tobacco and firearm, anybody that's on the Viper system, their radios are capable of accessing that system and having multiple channels that they can talk on and communicate, and they can coordinate events, like I remember we had an event when the president came to town a few years ago or something, they had to coordinate with other agencies, that's the way you do it, you talk through the Viper system. We want to ensure that our reliability and functionality of eight hundred megahertz system is the best it can be, we want to keep it updated and upgraded and keep it working functionally as best we can. And we want to be able to provide for an immediate response from our business should we have a system-related issue. In the, in the contract that we're proposing going forward with, if we have any kind of issue with our system, Motorola will have technical support on the ground, in the city, within four hours. So collapse of the system, we've got a lot of resources to call on Motorola to get this thing back up and going. We approached Motorola for options on how we can move forward. Our, our current maintenance contract, we negotiated that back when we did the upgrade, and it was, it'll run out in June and June the thirtieth for this time of year. We had a total maintenance contract, we had, we had a software upgrade and everything, but that's running out, so we went ahead and let's start, let's get some prices, let's see what we can do, let's get some options out there. The first option was Motorola will provide services to us on a year-to-year basis, they'll price us out every year, they'll tell us what the service is going to be. And, and the estimate for obtaining service that way was about two point seven million dollars. I'm going to tell you, talk ain't cheap, you know, this, this is expensive stuff, but this is what we're going to have to do if we maintain the system the way it should be. Option number two, was contracted in for services for a six-year period of time, total cost for that was two point three million dollars, and included in that is three software upgrades. And I'll tell you why these software upgrades, they're expensive, but they're very vital, if you don't do software upgrades, Viper is going to do software upgrades. When they do their software upgrades, if we don't do ours too, we can't communicate on the Viper system anymore. So that puts our PD and IR real disadvantage in dealing with events, or going out of town, or all the footwork of rescue and everything, they need to be able to talk to other agencies. Option three was contract for a ten-year period of time, that came in four point one million dollars, and you can see over inside parentheses, that's what it is on a yearly basis, the average cost. If you look at your pricing sheet, it's different cost per year, but these numbers represent the average.
Mayor.
Rusty, um, these contracts are related for service and maintenance, or does it include any of the hardware?
It includes a lot of the hardware, like the servers and routers and switches and all the controllers that are in the nine-one-one center. What it doesn't include is the actual radios, like you pick up, it doesn't include that, like the antennas, the batteries, or if somebody drops one off the truck or runs over or whatever, it does not include that. We actually looked at some pricing for that, but it, it, um, we thought it was a little too pricey for what we typically spend on radio maintenance. Most of our used takeout radios, pretty good.
Second, second question is, I mean, the technology's changing so quickly, and everything we're doing, I mean, is a, is a five, six-year contract reasonable, I mean, does, does that, the hardware, is it good for six years, eight years, ten years?
With the software upgrades, we believe it is, but you're right, it'll change. Um, there was a county in North Carolina that decided not to do upgrades, and they went several years, I think like eight or nine years, and didn't do any upgrades, and then they had to bring the system up to where it needed to be, and costs were just north of ten million dollars. So, you, you pay me now, or you pay me later, I was, that kind of problem. But this is kind of a little summary of what it, what it does cover, there's your four-hour response time, I reckon. This is replacement of servers and routers and switches and the controllers over in the nine-one-one center. Uh, there'll be a system backups, actually backup the system, and what that does, the main thing is all your program and all your software and everything, so there is a dump somehow, but the radio system loses its program, and they can, they can put it back in and that up for us. It involves three upgrades over the six-year period of time, that's option two. And down at the bottom, it does not cover the maintenance costs associated with the handhelds or the mobile radios, or the one-sided cars.
See, how many rooms do we have?
To me, ladies. We've got about, how many, you can name, maybe nine hundred, and between four fifty and five hundred of those are PD and fire. So they are our biggest, biggest problem. Our recommendation, after reviewing everything, and, uh, we've had several meetings all over this, and we, we tried to give them shop and test as much as we could, if you look at proprietary system, this is not a service we can go somewhere else and get, uh, we're going to get them, and we hammered on this, well, as we talked to it, and our recommendation is to go with option three, was six-year contract.
My question's.
Go ahead.
So, six-year over the ten-year, what's the reason?
When they got out in those last four years, it got really pricey, it got, it, I think, you cut, they cut the sheets, pricing sheets?
Can you go back to the slide, it shows the.
See, the average went up, you know, a little over twenty thousand dollars a year, in those last four years, they, they don't know, so they're going to err on the side, and we're going to make sure we get our enough funds. That was, that was pretty much what, and there is the thing about the technology, as you mentioned, you know, six years is a pretty long time, we feel pretty decent, comfortable about six years, but when you start getting to ten years, I don't know what would be happening in ten years.
I understand that there is, um, a statewide emergency communication plan, uh, but that goes by a different acronym, so is the word Viper an acronym, and if so, what does that stand for?
That's a good question, but I'm not sure exactly what Viper stands for, it is the State Patrol, the State Highway Patrol's network, the Viper system, and they've got, they've got a top, uh, antenna alert title, I can't remember what Viper stands for.
Well, if you Google Viper, it comes up with the name of a, an alarm company, so I didn't think that was the right name.
The term's been around a long time, Viper, it's been around a long time.
Oh, yeah, it's been around, been around a good while.
Thank you.
Ms. Wikez.
I was just, what I was going to ask about, it's a period of short of six years, but I think I've got the answer. We're actually talking about year-by-year for the six-year period?
Yeah, we're talking about option two, which we sign a contract that locks those prices in for six years. Option one, it'll be priced every year, and, and it'll be some number, they estimate right now it'll be two point seven million dollars, but there's no guarantee it will be, it'll be only year-by-year pricing.
Rusty, do you have enough knowledge of competitive, not, not competitors to Motorola, but pricing in other places to have a sense that this, this proposal is a comparable contract price?
We actually worked with a gentleman, Bob Hamlin, he actually worked for Motorola for like twenty years, twenty-five years, he's been in the radio business for about forty-five, he's worked on a ver, a number of systems where they've done upgrades and they've gotten maintenance contracts, and according to him, he said, it's, it's in the ballpark, he said, it's what you expect for that kind of price. Because when I first saw the numbers, I was like, you know, we'll come up here, you got to kick me out of the room, so.
Other questions?
One last question, I'm not sure if I heard you, but this is not a new thing, this is one we've done, been said before over the years.
We've had, we've had Motorola system ever since I've been in Rocky Mountain, since two thousand and three. It, Motorola is, probably sets the industry standard, you can get cheaper systems, but I don't know if you want to risk going something cheaper with what could be relying on getting through with radio communications.
Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you. Okay, then, uh, again, this will be tonight's agenda, and no other additional follow-up to the council on this at this time. The, uh, next item is, um, an update on the one-stop shop. You might recall, uh, some of you, uh, at least two years ago, you talked about the importance of doing something different for our development community, to make sure that our inspections and permitting processes were encouraging, um, development here, uh, in Rocky Mountain as opposed to, um, you know, working against, uh, developers, and so one of the, um, suggestions that I made, um, to the council was, was to explore the one-stop-shop model, and, uh, once we settled on, um, a new focus for what is now Development Services, and having Chris here and his team, um, they dutifully started working on, um, the model for here with the city of Rocky Mountain. It was proposed that we will use the space downstairs on the first floor where utility building once was occupied, and since they moved the Plaza Street, that opened up that entire area for us to, um, situate the one-stop-shop, um, program. Uh, we don't have time, uh, otherwise we would have opened that up and given you a very quick, uh, tour of the area so that you have an appreciation, uh, in terms of what it looks like now, and then what we propose for it to look like after. But I have to commend the team that really worked very hard on this, they went through the workforce, I mean, through the processing, work processing, uh, of how inspections are done, how permits are issued, um, to come to a conclusion that we think will be very, very beneficial. So with changes in the physical, uh, location, changes in the work process, location, changes, um, in how staff interrelates with each other as well with the development community, we think we have a very good model to proceed on. So this seemed to be a very good time to bring you up to speed in terms of our progress on that, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to, to the.
Very, thank you. See, again, our mission here for the one-stop is to improve coordination, predictability, timeliness and quality of customer service, uh, and the development review process as a whole, so technology where it, where it makes sense, um, it doesn't make sense just to put a whole bunch of technology out there and it, it doesn't work, we don't know how to use it, so technology where it absolutely makes sense and other functionality, streamlining our process to go through, you know, tons and tons of processes, figure out ways to kind of pull things out, and then use technology to reduce the gaps on some of those, um, as the manager mentioned, the physical space, which can lead to operational enhancements. So just a couple of the functions, coordinate the review process, um, you know, we, we do have some express review, we're going to work on, uh, getting, uh, some more of those, some of those that are, uh, what you're going to call sort of over-the-counter in some other locations, where you just turn it in, it's a very simple yes-no, we've got a process, um, intaking, cashering, um, getting to the point where we can do some additional things over the phone. We have people local to Rocky Mountain, but we also have people external that, uh, you know, want to get things done, and we can't process it until we get a check and some other things, so, uh, multi-department meetings, which we have the Development Review Committee, um, you know, help customers navigate, so we, we do have information out there, we've done a lot of, you know, updating our permit processes, but getting a lot more information out there, so when you look at all our processes, you can sort of narrow them down and create sort of two processes for, uh, commercial and residential, so you may have a homeowner versus a professional, so gearing it towards those people that may also kind of overlap a little bit, but allowing them to see some of that information upfront. Key elements, if you can help me out here, that first, that top link, um, some of the things that we've done, the picture is an example of some work we've done, the great staff in IT, um, to create this zoning map, it's on our Development Services homepage, uh, and when you're, when you're sitting here, you just see Rocky Mountain city limits, as you zoom in and go a little closer, um, you get more and more information will start to pop up. So we've designated the colors to match zoning, so your commercial, it's a red, office institutional, zoning blue, red, your higher density resi, I'm sorry, orange, your higher density residential, yellow, lower density subdivisions and that sort of thing, and purple being industrial, green agriculture, parks, open space. So if people get to the website and start to find, if you zoom in a little further, you get a little bit more information, you start maybe to see some of the parcel lines and then also the building footprints are just under there. And if you're able to click on any of these parcels here, you'll get a lot of information upfront that can help you. Those are typically, you know, building type, residential, single family. And you see it's one of five, so the different arrows here indicate different information that we can get you to. So we can, but it's in the city limits, perfect. What's your address, PIN number? And on this side, of course, we'll take you to the Edco County website, but you don't have to do that. See what else there. Zoning code tells you what zone you're in. So these are a lot of questions when people come in, these are kind of the typical questions that they ask. You know, what zone am I in? Where am I at? And, you know, I want to do this project, I don't know. And you got to figure out, you got to triage them, you know, are you, are you in the city of Rocky Mountain? You may not be, maybe just outside or may have a Rocky Mountain address or that sort of thing. But a lot of that information, we hope will be helpful. This is kind of just a start. We're going to add a whole lot more information as we go along through this process. But that's our, our website now, it's live.
Will, I'd use this a number of times.
Have you? Oh, sure. Awesome. Great, thank you. So we can go back to just the PowerPoint itself.
I have a question for you, the map.
Okay.
Are part of the development plans shown there or is that planned?
That's planned, yeah. We want to get that information out so people can see, you know, we do get a lot of calls at the office, like, what's going on over here? When is, you know, we've had a lot of development lately, a lot of, you know, Panera just opened last week. So, you know, what, what's going on here and there? And, you know, all this stuff is public record, we just have to put it out there. And so being able to pinpoint, I think development is one, planning cases that come up like rezonings and historic preservation cases, and we want to start to kind of get some of those up there on a cycle, so a lot of that information is up there. So just simply having buttons there where you click, it opens up sort of a, a site plan and/or an elevation, which I think people would be really excited to look at.
When do you expect the current development plans to show up?
The current development plans?
Corridor.
Corridor, I'm sorry, I thought you said current corridor. So I kind of went off on a tangent there. Some of the links in here get you to our zoning information, but what we can do, we can create the boundaries of those and we may get to a point where we put so much information on the page that some of these items you can check on and check off.
It'll be like an overlay.
Yeah, it'll be up to you how much you want to see, how much you, you know. So when we first looked at it, it was just Rocky Mountain and City Limits, but the further use, we may provide more options for you to turn on and turn off layers. So you get what you want as opposed to way too much information overload.
Thank you.
So we're good there. Inspection service updated, we've got required inspections through the state general statutes. We have a list of inspections that we require to do. We're trying to put that order of those requests out, permit plan review instructions. And as we started this, we have our main point of contact, the service, Rocky Mountain, t.gov, that's planning related questions, inspection related questions and community code related questions now. So you have a central point of contact. A lot of people have access to that email internally. So we see those and we get those responses back to you as quick as possible. One of the ideas that we have, maybe you talked about earlier, but the Munis Permit Code Enforcement Field Inspector app. So we hope that that's going to be installed this week. It's just an add-on feature from what we already have Tyler Munis Property Records Management. Inspectors will be able to process inspections in real time from the field with their devices, so like you have on the table here. We can add updates, notes, checklist items. We can reassign, so we're kind of got a small staff now and they're out sick, we're going to have to reassign inspections in areas, reschedule, but really importantly, take and attach photos. So if you say, you know, your inspection has failed, why has it failed? And instead of you having, and the customer having to do the runaround, hopefully those photos and notes will be able to show you, just hopefully it's a simple fix. I can, I can, I can reschedule you, I can come back in thirty minutes or I'll see you tomorrow. That's a simple fix. So a lot of great things hopefully come in. If we can get that online, I'm hoping we can test it out in probably early first of the year. So we want to do a lot of these improvements before we get downstairs. And a lot of times people get, they worry about the space, they get the space first and then they start doing process improvements and enhancements. So one-stop's going to be twenty-one employees, planning, zoning and inspections. There's sort of the breakdown, permit clerk, trade inspectors, development coordinator, as we will show you the idea here. Current conditions, so you come upstairs on the second floor, again, the first floor, half of it's vacant now, there's a lot of activity. This is kind of where all the activity kind of happens now in City Hall besides the third floor here. You get off the elevator and you're kind of like, where's, where's the, where's development services? Well, so inspections is over here. And you get to a point where you need zoning and planning information, you kind of got to go through the door, go in, go another door and then for your convenience, restrooms and escape route out. Just when you come into inspection right now, you've got one desk, you've got one desk, one computer screen, you've got a cash drawer, you just have one space. It's really inefficient and just the spacing there. So a lot of times conversations are held, the door is open and there's not a lot of room. And there's our sort of kiosk area, right? So you've got a small table, probably wouldn't even want to eat lunch there. We got a fan too, in case it gets too hot, they get upset about something. But I don't even know that you can walk around in the counter and sit in that chair. There's one over there. So we've had conversations with people about, you know, five people at a time, we just carry those conversations out in the hallway. So we don't have a lot of functional, operational space. And again, we're separate. We're all one group, but we, we'll say, well, you know, go to planning, go to zoning and there's a lot of crisscross. And that's, that's kind of frustrating for a lot of customers. So the idea downstairs, proposed design layout, if you're familiar with it, the current counter, as you walk in the entrance, is over here. The current counter where you used to pay your bills and whatnot. We've decided to sort of flip that a little bit so when you come in the door, you see, you know, the development services counter. Got three spaces there and these rooms are intended for more consultation. So we have a space, a functional space, and we have, we'll have kiosks for customers and then a stand-up workstation or table for those people. So a lot more room, but also some waiting area outside of the atrium. Conference room where we can hold our development review committee meetings, we may be even able to do some other committees. So plans review room, a large room, stand-up workstations to review plans, keeping individuals upfront and giving them access to the equipment they need. So you see a printer or any copy machine anywhere close, it's kind of tucked away so someone has to get up out of their chair and move around and do some things. So just some, just some minor inconveniences right now, but we hope that the physical space can certainly help us out. Trying to breeze through this a little quicker. Operational enhancements, so giving a lot of information out to people, the coordination of our systems, procedures and staff teams can increase customer throughput and improve our quality. Getting that information out front makes it a whole lot easier for people to initiate reviews and receive services more efficiently. Any other questions?
Will, you were talking about the express reviews. Is that something somebody would pay a little extra money for to expedite it?
It's a little extra, but, you know, we, I won't say that we're too slow in a lot of reviews because we have that timeframe that is pretty narrow, but sometimes we use that as a crutch and we say, well, I've got ten days, so why don't I just wait ten days? On the tenth day, you go, there's a problem here. And then we got to call somebody and say, well, why didn't you look at it? So it's, it's really, you know, things are, things are very complex now, late development management code, so it's, it's our understanding, customers' understanding, we got to get it a little bit closer. But express review typically is same day or twenty-four hour turnaround. And some people do take advantage of that.
Who is, who has actually redesigned this process, created the concept that you're about to implement?
The concept, right, so we have a, what we have is a one-stop team made up of different leadership team members and other staff members. And now that we've sort of got the nuts and bolts out of it, we're breaking off into separate groups of, you know, technology and process improvements and inspection improvements. So it's kind of following on development services now, started with that big umbrella of, you know, what do you see that needs to be improved? And now, now it's getting into the nuts and bolts, but space design, everything else is, you know, a lot more people are involved in that. But as far as, you know, putting into the paper now on initiation, implementation, it's development services, IT, finance, engineering plays a huge role in development review. So just anytime we make a quick change of process or make any updates on the website, making people aware of those things that we're doing.
So, so you and your staff are doing the work?
This is correct, yeah. Oh, we're not hired a consultant, is that what you're?
Well, I wasn't going to say that word.
Okay, no, we're not, we're not.
But I was going to make this commentary, I think a lot of times we feel like we got to go fifty miles away to find somebody who's smarter than we are. And usually, we're just as smart, if not smarter. So I congratulate you for your.
Yeah, and the field inspector, just going back to that app and hopefully we'll get that up and running pretty soon, that's something that was just a feature that we have with Tyler Munis with a lot of our things, it was just an add-on. So our cost essentially is only going to be the devices that we use. So some very simple things that we can, we can effectively just turn on without doing a whole lot of expenditures besides a renovation that will then allow, you know, our departments just to be together. So, you know, sometimes I, I go on the planning side and there's a customer sitting there and, well, someone sent them up here for this. And talk to them and then you got to walk them across the hall and back and forth. But to get the people in the front row as cross-trained as possible, because they've just been split for so long, to know that you're, you're capable, empower them to know what the rezoning processes are, order of adjustment, anything else, and, and everything will be handled right here without you having to go up, down, sideways, and we can call people down. That's another thing. So if we need an engineer or anyone else, come on down, schedule an appointment or pop in, we'll pull you into one of these rooms. We hope to have screens up there, we have the zoning map if you haven't already looked at it, have a lot of that information out there for you.
Ms. Miller.
Will, as I recall, the very first time you presented to council and committee and the whole, you talked about initiatives like this that were already being used in other cities, correct?
Correct.
And like most things we do, we look at our peer cities and best practices. So I assume that was kind of a starting place in redesigning our.
Absolutely, absolutely. That, that's kind of the best place to get information. Figure out who's doing it right and just take, take it and make it our own, right? And just make it even better.
I think the team actually visited Durham, the city of Durham. Is there others, but just the city of Durham.
This is the tweet, city?
City of Durham.
Other questions? Thank you.
So we'll, we'll keep you up to speed as we progress, but a lot of the heavy work has already been done. This also prevents people from having to jump across the street to pay a bill, you know, to dance back and forth from utility building to back over to development services.
Will, did you say when this whole process is expected to be completed?
The whole process, so I would like to have, so we can do a lot of website stuff really quickly, we can hopefully get that field inspector up and going and running sometime early in the first of the year. So a lot of those things will go in, so I'll say those will be complete, but it's going to be sort of an ongoing process. And then as we get down there, but hopefully we'll get some time before that to cross-train and create some of these permit guides and information so we can cross-train staff that has only ever dealt with inspections or only ever dealt with planning and, you know, has limited knowledge of what each other does. And then our wrinkle in is community code information too that they need to be aware of since we're all, you know, we're one division under us now. So constant, hopefully constant improvement. I don't want to say that it's just going to be done at this date because I want to keep adding information and looking at other places and seeing what they do.
Where's the physical space going to be done?
It's up to bid right now, construction is just going to start beginning of January. And there's six months left.
So we'll take some pictures of what space looks like now and then once the instructions are completed, we'll get it through. So we'll just continue to keep council up to date on our.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, Paul Tim, I think we, a little early, boards and commissioners, I think the clerk said that she didn't have anything.
I gave you one. Okay, I was going to say I gave you a handout, but I think it's self-displanatory.
I've got one for the workforce housing fiber commission. Initially, we talked about putting Kelvin Macklin on there with the housing authority and he initially thought it would be a conflict, but I let him talk to some of his board members and he's agreed to do that now, so we're going to point him to that.
Workforce housing. You said workforce housing, please. Can you get us a person? In which, in which space is that? Oh, you see, okay, let me look at that. So I'm not sure where you're putting, or that's my question, is because you were pointing to workforce housing, I believe, as John Paulman?
Okay, good. Which line up there?
You don't, you don't for workforce housing, so you do for tree advisory and for, another community appeals for it?
Okay, yeah.
That's Gloria Williams?
Yeah.
And do you have a personal history for it?
No.
Will you?
I'll get you.
Just call me and I will get it to you.
I'll get you the number.
Okay.
I do have one for out of control board. She has a form already for herself, we'll bring it to you.
Do you want to tell me who that, you want?
I'm not sure of her last name because, I'm not sure of her last name.
Can we just wait and put it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any others? And I guess we're complete at that part then. We did need to go into a closed session for personnel matters, exclude anyone like the council mayor. I need a motion to go into a closed session. All the factors say aye? Any opposed?